Welcome, everybody, to the zoning board meeting of February 6, 24. My name is Marty Aitken. I'm the chairman. The vice chairman, Mr. Ray Dell, Mr. Hamill, Mr. O'Brien, this is our clerk, Mrs. Noonan, and the director for inspectional services, Mr. Conlon's behind me. If we could do two things. First, case number ZBA 2285 is looking for an extension. Motion, please?
Chairman, case ZBA 2285, 1234, 1244 Furnish Park Way, and 211 and 217 Copeland Street. We're looking for an extension to expire on September 22, 2024.
Second.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. I have one for 23, extension 23-2.
Mr. Chairman, ZBA 23-2, 43 Roslin Ave, looking for an extension to expire on September 8, 2024.
Second.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Ray Dell, could you give everyone the oath, please?
You're gonna speak if you're gonna testify.
Anyone's gonna speak, please stand up and raise your right hand. If you think you might speak, please stand up and raise your right hand and take an oath. If you don't take an oath, you will not speak.
We swear that you tell the truth and nothing but the truth, and the matter's now here in.
Thank you. All right. Here's our problem tonight. Guy's not here, so there's only four of us. You have the right to have five people at your hearing. If you're looking for a variance, and one person here says no, it will be no. If you're looking for a finding, one person says no, three years should get your finding. Let's start with the first case tonight. 2354, Jack Milgram, 54 Spring Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm a member for record. My name's attorney, Jack Pino, on behalf of the applicant. We're looking for a continuance of this evening's hearing until the next available date. When we were here last time, there was apparently a consensus among the board that the plan should be reworked and attempt to make the project smaller. We've done that or attempted to do that. We sent plans to council some weeks ago. I did hear back from the council yesterday. I understand that council also sent an email today to the zoning board. So I'm not criticizing the council, but it's a little bit disturbing because the email that I see didn't send to the... The board is a little different than the email that I received yesterday. In any event, obviously, I'd like to have a little bit of time to reconcile the two emails. It's also my understanding that my associate did email revised plans yesterday to Ms. Noonan, but I understand Ms. Noonan is saying that she cannot receive them. So in any event, we will tomorrow morning, fourth rest, provide paper copies of the revised plans to the zoning board. So we just ask them for a continuance.
Right. We asked to have those a week ahead of time.
I understand that. As I explained, we hadn't heard back from the council, so yeah, that's why.
But next time that happens, really get them to us anyway.
Sure.
Send them at the same time, yeah.
Yeah, send them at the same time, so we all get them, because, you know, I asked anyone, did they get the new plans, and it's still on the board tonight, so, okay. Could I have a motion for...
What, a meeting?
The 20th. Move it to the 20th. Let's see who's here.
Mr. Chairman, ZBA 2354, Jacky Milgram, for a variance and special permit flood plane to construct a single-family home on the existing open lot on the premise numbered 54 Spring Street. Quincy, make a motion to move to February...
Second?
Second.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here for Spring Street that's gonna be held on the 20th? And the reason being, number one, we didn't get a set of plans. So the plans we'll get, and we'll be here the 20th on Spring Street. No, because that's in confidence, and he might not even, I might not even read that. I'm not reading into the record, and he might be here next time. But you know what it says.
I do know it.
Okay. There you go. We're gonna ask everybody, you gotta write, as I said, to have your hearing by five people. Well, let's go through the list. Bird Street. Mr. LaRoche?
Mr. Chairman, I guess, is it possible to go through the discussion and then decide whether we continue? Or should we, you know, is that our...
No. You have to decide before you do this.
Okay.
The 20th, I understand, there will be five people here.
Okay. Then we would request a continuance to the 20th.
Mr. Chairman. On the motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, ZBA 2389, Peter O'Connell for a variance to subdivide the lot into two lots and construct a new single-family home on each lot with a garage and two-car driveway on the premise numbered 83 Bird Street. Quincy, I make a motion to move to February 20.
Second.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. On the new business, Philip Baker, 54 Emerald Street. There's four of us here tonight.
Yeah, we're okay with going forward.
Okay.
Just have a seat for a minute. Let's run through all of them, and just to see, we don't want people waiting around if they don't wanna... Yeah, they were already continuing.
Yeah, I know.
Do we have a date, or...
Yeah, yeah.
Push it out.
I am. I'm gonna push it out in a month. We'll do that in one second. Yeah, if anyone's here for here, let me get rid of this one. ZBA 202390, Patrick Foley Esquire, 10 Independence Ave. I have a letter here, he wants to continue it. We can move that out to March. You're gonna be there after the 9th, correct, or so?
I should be here the second meeting in March.
23rd.
Yes.
All right. March 23rd. March 20, 23rd.
It's not the 20th. No, it's the 23rd. Yeah.
I think it's 9th and 23rd, or something.
Yeah, 'cause I fly back the 17th, which is Sunday. No, so it's the 21st, 26th?
So when's this resting? The 12th?
'Cause it's election day.
Right, right. Oh, March 12th and 26th, I gotta hear.
Yeah, 'cause it's...
That's April. All right, that's April's up here. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, ZBA 23... So I'm going the 20th.
26th, yeah.
ZBA 2390, Patrick Foley Esquire, for a variance and finding to replace the existing auto body shop with a nine-unit condominium building and one commercial unit with 23 parking spaces on the premise numbered 10 Independence Ave. Quincy, I make a motion to move that to March 26th.
Second.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. For the run-in tonight, we got ZBA 2391, 44 St. Anne's Road. There's four people here tonight.
Okay.
So not five.
Okay.
So...
And he's a finding, so you need three out of four.
Yeah. So it's up to you, whatever you want to do. You wanna put it off, or you wanna hear it?
Yeah, I wanna hear it.
Okay. Have a seat. We'll get back to you. There's four of us here tonight, not five.
You'd need all four.
You need all four votes, correct.
Okay.
Huh?
We will act as...
You're gonna put it off of us?
No, continue.
Continue, okay. Now, let's go back to 2386.
Yep. You're up.
You're up. 54 Emerald Street.
Right.
Name and address for the record, please?
Philip Baker, 54 Emerald Street.
Yeah.
So they are a pre-existing non-conforming in regards to the right-side setback and front setback along with lot width. We're only 62.5 and 85 required. We're only 8.1 feet on the right-hand side and only 20.7 on the front. So they're looking to do a new covered porch on the front. It's only an eight-by-five, just to cover the door. So that's encroaching on the front setback. And the right-hand setback, we are extending, but actually stepped it in a little bit to make it 8.4. So we're actually definitely less than what the, actually a little more than what the as-built is.
Well, that's because it's in an angle, correct?
Correct. We kinda stepped in a little bit to kinda make it so we're above the 8.1 threshold.
Yeah, you got three inches on the other side.
And then we're actually increasing it in the left-hand side. We're 12.2 existing, we're 12.7. The biggest thing was the expanded driveway. Right now, they just did new sidewalks and curb cuts in, you know, on Emerald Street. The street is very narrow.
Yeah.
So right now, you really can't park like two cars in the street and kinda get by everybody. So they're just looking to get two more off-street parking spots and still use a garage. So that's why we're expanding the driveway and do some retaining walls, just to kinda get cars off the street and also their driveway.
What are you doing with the... To get back there, to do this work? How you gonna get back there? Bulldozes and all this? How are we doing all that?
That's more the contract. I'm not exactly sure. They're getting pricing right now, so they're trying to figure out how to get a truck back there. But they'll probably do some sort of, you know, small digger back there and get around the left-hand side. But then, you have 11.1 feet, and the neighbor's not so close, they can kinda go onto the property and get her on the backside.
Yeah, you get your retaining wall there, right?
Yeah, there's, all that retaining wall is all being ripped off in the back. That's all gonna be removed. There's some, all railroad ties, they're all gonna be demolished.
And then what are you gonna do? Put up a new wall back there?
They're gonna make a new wall back there. And that's more with the landscaper and trying to figure out how to regrade the yard. Because right now, it's very tight. They only have about, it's probably 18 feet to the wall, their backyard. So we're increasing the footprint in the rear. It's just a older couple, Tron and Monique. So they're just looking to get a primary suite, master bath, walk-in closet, new kitchen. They're trying to make it a livable house right now.
No, that's nice. But downstairs, you're gonna have, now you're gonna have a wet bar and an extra...
Yeah, living space down the basement, so they...
With an extra bedroom, full bath?
Full bath, bedroom, laundry.
I mean, to me, it's gonna look like an apartment down there. How you get, how do you get out of there, just through the fire escape in the back to get out if you have...
Yeah, correct. You drive in the main level, so when you pull in, there's a driveway.
Right, and then you can go in.
There's a new side door we're adding on the side. So we'll actually have, we'll actually have three means of egress out of the basement. We'll have a new bulkhead, we'll have a door come out of the garage, and we have the main stair for the first walk. So we'll actually have three different egress points to get out for them if they need it. It's just more space. House is tight, it's a small living space. That's why they're trying to expand it. Their living room's only about a 12-by-12, it's a small area, so they wanna use the basement for more living space, entertainment. So they're not having any sort of like kitchen down there, it's strictly just entertainment. They have a TV and setup down there, so it's only them. Their kids are in college, so they're gonna eventually probably come back, I'm assuming. So just the two of them, kinda age in place, make the house more usable.
All right. What are you doing for windows in the back there, and that 14-foot addition? Is that a double door? There's three windows.
And the screen and porch?
No, no, no. In the back, on the first floor, right?
Yeah, the back, yeah.
That's where the bedroom is?
Yeah, three egress windows in the back.
And they're full?
They're full height, all the egress, yep. And the right-hand side's an awning window above their bed, and then they have a screen and porch, you know, so essentially in the kitchen...
You get three full windows in the back, all right?
Correct, yeah, looking to the backyard.
Looking at the neighbors.
Looking to the backyard. So the right-hand side's the neighbor's side, and that's just an awning window, just above their headboard. And then on the left-hand side, where you have the kitchen, we have a rear-facing window looking inside, the screen and porch, and then two windows looking over the stove top.
On the right, on your right elevation, you're rocking up the back there, right? You get three full glass, that's the bedroom back there, correct?
The windows on the right-hand side, those are all existing, so there's...
No, no, no. No, no.
Right rear.
Right rear, on your addition, correct?
Yep.
On the back here, you get, it looks like a six-foot slider or something, and a piece of glass, I don't know.
Yeah, that's, that's screen and porch. Those are all screens.
Oh, those are screens?
Yeah, those, that's just an addition on the back for screen and porch. That, that's above and beyond the kitchen. The kitchen stops, and then you have a screen and porch behind the kitchen. They have it right now, and they like the amenity, so they want to add that.
Yeah, move it back.
Yeah, move it back, correct. And that's the screen, there's not heat in there, it's just strictly screens on...
Three-quarter porch, right?
Yeah, correct, yep.
All right.
So really, the whole right-hand side, they're taking a bedroom, they gained a bedroom for their primary, adding a bathroom and shared walk-in closet, and the basement has a...
Aren't they keeping three bedrooms on that level?
They are. They're removing the bedroom and adding the...
They're removing the bedroom and adding the master.
Correct.
So it's the same. The only one they're adding is down there.
Yeah, extra bedroom, yeah. With the bulkhead that goes out of it.
Bulkhead, full garden.
And that's just the habit for the, the Cal or Quincy have a four-bed house for resale. But they probably use it as storage, it's not gonna be used as a bedroom. And the left-hand side, the storage area, bathroom, laundry in the basement.
Mm-hmm.
So we're asking for the variance in the covered porch out front, and then the driveway being widened, but as I said, they...
Is that a double front door you got on this now?
Yeah, double front door, correct, yeah. They like that kinda look, 'cause as they get older, they wanna be able to open both doors. As I said, they really didn't want the new driveway.
Except to get the wheel, or...
No, yeah, correct, yeah. They, they wanted the wide driveway. After they put the curbs, they realized how tighter it was, and that was the last-minute thing they wanted me to see, if we can get more parking off-street. Because it is tight. You're drawing on Emerald, it's, it's pretty tight.
It is tight. Real tight down there. And all the houses are tight down there.
No, they are, correct. So it was just an amenity to try to get, you know, three cars off-street. They'll do two in the driveway, and then one in the actual garage itself.
Garage, right.
Right now, you can just do two tandem, you have the backup, get someone out of the, out of the garage. So if they do park their normal two cars, just the two of them right now, so they can at least get someone out of the driveway if they need to.
The driveway, 20 feet, all right. I got a couple more questions afterwards. Those were my questions on the project. I don't know if you wanna go forward to the rest of the guys, whatever you wanna do.
Did you say the retaining wall in the back was coming out?
It is, correct.
Okay, 'cause right here, it says retaining wall to remain future grading by others.
Yeah, that's, that's the site plan, that's, that's Don Rosa. So as I said, they're getting pricing right now, they're trying to figure out the landscape and get pricing, but that is gonna be modified, where it's gonna be a flat grade in the back. And where they have that second retaining wall, that, that's gonna be the larger one that holds back the grade to get a, kind of a plateau backyard, you know?
Thank you. I'm good at this time.
All right, you can have a seat. Is there anyone wanna speak in favor? First call? Council?
James Devine, 117 Frost Street. It's a nice neighborhood up there, the streets are all done over. And I know the property, it is actually a thin driveway, has walls too, so makes it even harder, 'cause opening new doors and things like that. Nice people, they have a really nice, maintained property, so I think they're, they're good people and good stewards. Just wanted to say that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Is there anyone else speaking in favor? Second call? Third call? All our party hearing closed. I have a letter here from the DPW. We reviewed this immediately involved reference project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed to run the side of here?
Door?
Opposed to run the side, step up. Name and address for the record, please?
Nice, Mark Pico, 60 Nickel Road in Cohasset. I grew up in that house. My mom's still there, she's homebound. I did a lot of work in that backyard for the Dingwells, they owned it back in the 70s, okay? And my mom's been there for 50 years, and she's having some issues now. And that lot is a postage stamp. There is no way you could put a driveway out front like that, there's not one, you gotta go half a mile to find a two-family that looks like that with the parking out front. And I know that's a first step in making it a two-family, if you get the parking, so...
They don't have the parking for a two-family.
I understand that, I wouldn't give it to them either. Because I don't, I don't understand why somebody, two people need a house that big, first of all. The yard, there's no access to the yard.
That's what I'm worried about, the access to the yard.
It's gonna be a mess. I mean, with all the rain we've been having and stuff, there's gonna be mudslides into my mother's, and my, the whole place is on a slope.
I know, it comes down, right?
They're on the outside of the house, and I think it's a violation of all the butters and neighbors who live in that neighborhood. If I don't know if you've been up there on Emerald Street, we used to call it Fake Milton over our kids. Because it's just a really residential family neighborhood. If you bring that into the neighborhood, you're gonna see other people trying to do it. I just wouldn't allow it.
Mm-hmm.
So thank you.
Thanks, people. Is there anyone else opposed to run the side?
Just gonna say.
Yes. Third call? You got a letter here? Reading for the record?
Kyle and Mary Ainsley, 64 Emerald Street. Quincy, comment one, we're concerned about the overall size of the proposed project. Based on the plans provided, it seems that the existing combined area, the first floor and basement is 22,448 square feet. And combined area of the first floor and basement of the proposed new house with the addition is 3,561 square feet. That's a 45% increase in size. The house, described by the applicant, has already been non-conforming on the lot. Small lot, 7,650 square feet, and already has a large detached shed on it. Comment two, we're not sure why 22-foot-wide four-car driveway would be approved for a single-family home in the neighborhood, but two-car driveway, single lane are fairly common. Comment three, we're really concerned about legislation being proposed by the state to create multifamily properties out of existing single-family homes and the recent trend of investors buying a property in advance of the legislation. We know what the fans' plans are, but we have not discussed the proposed renovations with us. Be assured, we completely support the fans' plans to renovate their house only to a small scale. Thank you for considering our concerns when you vote on the variances.
Who's that from?
60, Kyle and Mary Ainsley, 64 Emerald.
I just have a few questions about, you know, the yard back there, getting the work done there, without making a mess of this whole neighborhood. And, and you know, I kinda looked in there, I didn't really walk in the back, I should've walked in the back of that, because I mean, I saw how it was up and everything, but I don't know. I really don't know. Oh, guys, please. I'd like to come back to the 20th. I wanna take another look at the back of that yard. See how bad that is.
Yeah, so it's, it's tight, yeah.
Have a seat. Thank you.
It is tight.
I know it's tight, and it's gonna be tough back there work. I just wanna make sure that it's gonna fit the neighborhood. When I kinda looked at it, I goes, all right, they're giving you an inch here, two inches there, but that retaining wall, I just looked at that, and it just blew me away. I goes, how the hell you gonna get back there and work? You can't come on the other side. So that's just my feeling. I'd like to take another look, 'cause if I don't, I'll say no now. But I'd rather take another look and give the guy the benefit of the doubt than come back to 20th, if that's okay with you guys. We just vote on it. Come back, take another look?
I'll be, let's see, this kid screwed.
No, we'll have, what's his name? I'll have him ready on film, I'll have him watch the film.
I'd like to see a plan of retaining wall, where it would be, and...
Yeah, I know. What's gonna, what's gonna hold it up?
The wall's the key to me, I'd like to see...
The layout of that retaining wall.
Yeah, no, I just, uh...
How's it gonna work? What are they doing with the construction?
Yeah, I'd like to vote on the maybe.
I know. It's like, it could be a real mess, nightmare back there.
Yeah.
You know? All right, wanna put it off? You're not gonna be around, right?
I won't be for the next two, so...
Next two, so it's March.
It's not like you can put it off, yes.
Well, you can.
I mean, you can put it off to the end of March, that's about it.
Yeah. But we're gonna have everyone back next week.
Yeah, fine, next week.
The 20th.
Yeah, we can watch the testimony.
You can watch the testimony on there, and I'll just, I'll just call, call up and ask them to do that.
So 20th? Is that enough time?
What's the next, give me another, give me another week. What's the, what's the March?
March 12th.
I got it right here, 12th. Two Marches.
Okay.
Last meeting's getting, getting crushed.
Mr. Chairman, ZBA 2386, Philip Baker, for a variance to extend the left and right sides of the home, construct a covered landing to the front of the home, and widen the driveway on the premise numbered 54 Emerald Street. Quincy, I make a motion to move to March 12th.
Second.
With, with a set of plans showing the retaining wall, what they're gonna do with it, the heights, you're gonna do all that and get it back to us?
Can I, can I call? Yeah.
You're gonna get it back to us a week before the meeting, so it's gotta be in her office a week before the meet, so we can get it out of the house to reading, okay? Set of plans. Now it's your comment.
Yeah, so they're, they're not opposed to getting rid of those front retaining walls. That was strictly done because of the road. So if that was a hiccup of having it, they don't mind or...
No, there's a hiccup of the whole thing, building it, getting back there, the way it goes up, really does. It's like, I wanna make sure we all know what's gonna go back there, where the wall's gonna go, how the new one's gonna go, plateau elevations on what you're building, so we know. So it's not a maybe, it's, if we know.
Right, understood, yeah. So I said, if, if it's coming to the point where the retaining walls are too much for too much for the neighborhood and too much parking and all that sort of work, they're fine removing that and then seeing how they get trucks. I can talk to the contractors who are bidding it and get an idea of what they're thinking of how to get a truck back there to dig. I'd get that idea for that as well, so. We're open to any of them, whatever the board needs.
Well, we'll talk about that, uh, March twelfth. Okay, can I have a motion, please?
We are doing. Very moving.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, so move.
Thanks very much.
Thanks. You're going to make sure we have all that stuff, correct?
Yes, correct.
All right, thanks. Twenty-three ninety-one, uh, Saint Anne's Road. Applicants, do you have the floor, name and address for the record, please?
Um, please, uh, show me.
Counselor's right behind you.
Yes, sir.
How are you?
Mr. Mayor, how are you?
Thank you, thank you. He must not sound soon.
Mr. Mayor, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Never seen you in a while.
I know, yeah, it's been a little bit. Um, so this is a change of use. I know everybody's probably a little skeptical of it, uh, in wondering, well, how, how is somebody going to make money on vending machines, you know, at the end of a road that really most traffic is just for the schools, but, uh, he's not making any money with what he's doing now. It's been, you know, his current use has been ten years, and he's just trying to, uh, recoup some, some money. The change of use sincerely is not substantially more detrimental than what's going on there now, what has been going on for the past ten years. I know there's some concerns regarding traffic, but this is not a traditional convenience store. There's not going to be any traffic, there's not going to be any cars. What there's going to be is kids going in to get their candy. In fact, it's probably safer for them to do it in that location than it is around the corner, on the corner of, uh, O'Callaghan and Hancock Street, where the cars fly around the bend and kids are coming out of the store with their candy. I, I, you know, I don't see a lot of downside, and certainly I don't see any type of detriment to the, to the area. Um, Mr. Wu only wants to be open a couple hours after school and maybe an hour or so before school. That way the kids can get their snacks from the, and he will have somebody on-site at all times while it's open. So, no traffic, really, and I know, um, maybe somebody might think there's going to be traffic, but I don't know why, you know, anybody would drive there to get something out of the vending machine. It's really geared towards the kids.
Right.
And, um, so, uh, he's seeking a, a change of use to allow him to have vending machines and a, and a, there's a big open, uh, big picture window. There'll be somebody there inside while it's open at all times, and, uh, he'll be allowed to.
He had an online business there before, correct? Wasn't that online?
Well, somewhat of a, yeah, somewhat of a.
Online business?
Victor could talk to it a little bit more. Yeah, mostly online, so.
And do you sleep up top?
No, no.
That's just one building, just?
The top is essential for the eleven people.
You just got that little front door, then?
Yeah.
Just that small section? Oh, all right. I thought that was all one unit.
And I think there's a diagram of it in the, uh, package.
Yeah, I saw the three rooms. I just saw upstairs was, was the bedroom up there. All right.
So, um, Victor was here before you, uh, prior, uh, and the suggestion was to come back after the school was built, to Christopher Learning Center, which was built. Uh, I'm not sure really what, what difference it's going to make, to tell you the truth, with this type of use, because this type of use is really for just the kids to go in and out of, uh, and grab a, grab a snack or, or a soda, or hopefully a water, if my wife is watching, not a soda. And, um, and that's it, really. Uh, so the, you know, I know the standard is, uh, it can't be substantially more detrimental than the existing use. I don't know how this is detrimental at all, uh, in terms of a use. Uh, certainly if the kids are going to eat candy or snacks that they don't think are healthy, uh, or their parents don't think are healthy, uh, they're going to do it anyways, and they're going to get them around the corner. Uh, better on a safer side street that, that, uh, is right across the street from the school.
Yep.
Uh, and that's really the, the gist of it. I understand the Ward Councilor spoke with the superintendent who thought there might be some traffic issues and other issues.
Wearing old people crossing the street, kids running across the street quick to get a, to get a tootsie roll or whatever and get hit by a car.
Yeah, well, like I said.
I know, I know what you mean.
Right? You, you know the location of the convenience store around the corner. We used to go to.
Right on the main.
Fatturino's, excuse me.
Yeah, it's right, it's right on the sidewalk, right.
But, but yeah, it's right on the sidewalk, and, and, and it's on a dangerous curve as well. So, I mean, in, in terms of safety, the, if, if I were going to send my kids to, to a place to get a candy bar, it would have been there rather than, and it might even encourage the kids to go the pathway home instead of going by Hancock Street. Uh, and stay away from the tunnel. I know about that tunnel. I went to Saint Anne's for a couple of years.
Now, the, the counselor called me, he didn't, he didn't want nothing to do with that. He didn't want nothing.
Yeah, and I understand.
And I get it, I get it.
I do.
And I still don't get vending machines, only going to be open like three hours a day.
Yeah.
How are you going to make any money if you're paying someone to stand there and watch it? That I don't get either, but that's his business.
Well, he'll probably be there.
But that's his business, whatever he does.
Yeah, that's right.
I just don't, I don't think it's a good thing, personally, I don't.
Yeah.
I, I just think that store shouldn't be on that road. That's just my opinion. I, I don't think there should be a store by that whole big thing down there. So, I just think, I don't know, to me, to me, it's like, uh, I don't know, it's like going back to Quincy Point fifty years ago, so. Where we had all them little things and all those little stores, little things outside the stores, and next thing there'll be a little sign hanging out there, and come on in, we got two floors. It's just thing for me, counselor, I know, I know. I just feel bad, but it, it's just, I don't think it's wanted down, that's mine, I don't know. Any questions?
I don't know.
Is it condo, right, sir?
Excuse me?
Is it, this is?
No, it's not, he's, he, he leases.
It's separately owned, so this is not?
It's separately owned.
Okay.
The, the owner's, uh.
You're the owner, right?
No, he's.
Oh, you lease this property?
Yeah.
Oh, oh.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
But, I, I seem to think that the reason that we asked for it to wait for the, um, center to be built is we want to see what kind of traffic the center generated.
Right.
In addition to the school.
You, you're correct, and it was my understanding that it had opened, the center had opened. I know it's, it had a grand opening, but it's officially not open.
Yeah, I don't think they're, right?
No, not until next year.
No, September is when they, they officially open.
But I seem to think, because we didn't know what type of, if it was going to be mini buses or whatever, you know, handicap vans, or what's going to bring the kids into that center, so. That, that, I think that that was the question that I raised when, when.
That's correct.
We, we asked them to wait until it was there.
And one of the reasons why we brought it forward now was, Mr. Wu has to, you know, fish a cup aid at this, at this location, pretty much. I mean, he's paying, he's paying rent and he, to wait another nine months or seven months or eight months, he's waited a significant period of time already, and, and again, to the traffic issue, whether they're buses or handicap buses or, you know, whatever they are. I don't see the, the kids run across the street, they, they go through the tunnel, they walk that way anyways. I don't see our parents going in there.
They do.
And pulling up, uh, so, that's, that's, you know, the position.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor? First call? Second call? Third call closed? No correspondence? Is there anyone opposed to on the side? Be a little later here. Good evening, Counselor.
My name is Dan Vinton, I'm the new Ward Five City Counselor. I picked up for Counselor Chuck Fairland, not to be confused with Counselor Fairland here.
Well, when this was going on, it was Chuck that I talked to. So, I lost, I give it here.
When I first became Counselor, one of the issues that, you know, the Counselor Fairland talked to me about was Saint Anne's. His concern was that he talked to neighbors, talked to Principal de Christopher at Central, and the principal and the neighbors were adamantly against having a convenience store down there, especially when the hours were going to be at peak hours, when the kids were getting out of school. I lived near Central Middle School, I avoid that when I have to go anywhere, because when the kid, people are getting out of school, it's crazy, they have a, a crossing guard there, cars are lined up, so one-way at the time, cars are lined up on both sides, and this doesn't even take into account the new learning center with special need kids. I talked to Superintendent Melvin, and he too was adamantly against it and wanted me to express that clearly to you folks. His concern was with the special needs kids, that one of them might run across the street and head up both ways, and that would be a disaster, uh, for that program and for the city. And lastly, for those of us who live in the area, we know it's a cut through, it's a bypass, uh, when traffic is, when school's getting out, and so that increases the volume of traffic through there too, so. Uh, I can't say enough that we would love to have you visit the Ward Five, uh, but this just is not the place for it.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there anyone else opposed on the side? Second call? Third call, call up, part of the hearing closed. I, I just, no, that's, there's no, there was nothing, yeah, that's what I said, there was nothing. Uh, I, I just don't like the thought of a little, little store across the street on a side street like that, it's just, I, it's just me, it's just, you know, it's just, I don't like it.
I dropped my kids down there for five years at Campus Kinders, it's just, it's a challenging place to get, and people do.
It is.
Park on both sides of the street, and, and somebody's going to run across the street.
Probably me, you know? But that's what I was like, I don't, I don't, I don't.
All right.
I don't even think it's that, it's more.
I didn't like it when we postponed it last time, so.
It just, just don't seem like the right place for, for kids to run into a little building, I don't know, just, it's just like.
I feel bad for the other.
I do too. Yeah, yeah, and you're sitting there and, you know, it's twenty-two, you can't move, can't do, I know.
It's on you, Charlie.
No, Charlie, Charlie goes, hey, I'm out of this one now.
This is irrelevant.
You want to vote on it or you want to, which way we're all?
I think we just, some heavy vote on it.
All right.
Because I don't think.
I have a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, ZB A twenty-three ninety-one, Zhao Bing Wu, for a finding to change the use of the business to a retail convenience store on the premise numbered forty-four Saint Anne's Road, Quincy, and make a motion to deny the finding.
Second.
On the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, so move.
All right, thank you.
Nice seeing you anyway, Mr. Mayor.
Nice to see you too.
Further on tonight's business, uh, an outfit, Matt Yale, for a variance in binding to construct a full-length dormer to the east side at a master suite, renovate the interior and exterior of the home on premise number fifty-eight Appleton Street.
How do you do? Um.
I don't know.
Which one? So, City Hall City? Uh, yes.
Only take five minutes so she gets out and running.
Be late there.
Take a breath, everybody. Take a breath, everybody. To order here, one minute. She works, you hang around and talk to me.
Just a quick question.
At the 20th, I'm gonna have someone watch the video so they know what happened to the meetings. And the other guy will be here too.
Great, thanks.
So he'll be back. No, but Mr. Frank will be here. Thank you. Now you can go. She told me that. She said, no, excuse me, one minute.
The gentleman, there more.
He is a gentleman. I seen him on his phone.
Oh, he's excited.
Send me that bill, so he's feeling all right.
He learned. He's gonna save trees, Marty.
All right, it's up. All right. Name and address to the floor, please.
Okay. Anatbeek Nachtegal. I'm from 82 Spring Street in West Rutsbury. They're a group of architects. And I'm here presenting Lorraine, Shannon, and Jonathan, from owners of, it's 58 60 Appleton Street. I think Lorraine can introduce this stuff.
So we're...
You have to come up there if you want to speak at all. You have to come up, name and address for the record, just so it's on the record. Thank you.
My name's Lorraine Conroy and Jonathan and Shannon are, my nephew and his fiance, we own this two-family house. And we've lived in Quincy forever. We all grew up in this neighborhood. And so we were able to buy this house about a year and a half ago.
Okay.
And so, but, and that's gonna present the proposal.
Sure.
For the registration.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. So, existing home, two family. We're keeping it as two family. Lorraine gonna take over the first floor and Shannon and Jonathan will occupy the upper floors. We want to upgrade the building. It's, right now it's in a bit of a need love and care. So we're gonna strip down the siding and just beautify it.
Can we, can you speak a little bit? Because we have to get that on the mic too.
Oh, sorry.
You're gonna leave that there, but just speak up a little bit if you can.
Okay, of course. So, we mostly need variance for the upper floor. Sorry, to zoom in. We are adding a dormer on the east side of the building. And that creates a bigger square foot on the top floor. So instead of two and a half stories, it will be, become a three-story building. So we requesting variance for that. Everything else should conform. There's a bit of a non-conformity extension. On the west side, we are adding a small dormer above the existing staircase. So right now there's no bedroom. So we're just providing a decent headroom. So I'll just take you through the project.
Ready?
No, no, she's taking us through the problem.
Yeah, I just, okay. Okay, so we're doing some cleanup of the floors. Lorraine wanted just to give her a more comfortable one floor, on the first floor, meaning that the family room is a bit right now sunken. So we are making it all the same level, creating a bit of an entry and creating the rear porch if existing. Just removing some of the additional staircases that are there. So it's mostly interior. We are changing the rooftop over the family room and we want to provide some proposed, sorry, panels, solar panels. On the second and third floor, second floor, there's hardly, there's not a lot of change. We can see that most of the walls, they're black, they're the existing walls. Just a little bit in the back, we are removing the staircase that is connecting the, all the floors. But each unit has two exits, so it's not meeting any building code issues. On the third floor, this is where we're requesting variance. We're adding a full dormer on the east side, small dormer on the left, on the, about the staircase. And just providing additional rooms for this young family, Shannon and Jonathan. So...
On the, the left side. So that's your, that's your new staircase right there?
Yeah, no left.
Okay, all right.
Right there. That's why they need the dormer.
Yeah, there's no head, there's a headroom there right now.
Get your head going up.
Yeah, no, no, I just, I just made it try and understood it correct.
If we look at the proposed elevations. So at the front, we just wanna clean up the front porch and Lorraine requested some screens. And we just cleaned it up with some nice columns. Right now we just have the stick columns. And then we're changing the roof above the family room, just bright solar panels as well. And there's not a lot of changes on the outside. It's just clean out the siding and just a little bit of change about the, the windows are gonna be replaced with new ones. So, that's, pretty much sums up the, the project's information.
And I'll tell you just how I feel because I've voted that way before. You're in a Residence A neighborhood. You're in a Residence A neighborhood. People wanna have two and a half story homes. If you wanna come back, I wouldn't vote for, because of that reason. You have a two-family house that's in a Residence A neighborhood. Now you wanna make it a full two-family house. And I've said no to other people, so I have to stay with that and say no. If you wanna, if you wanna redo it, redo your roof and redo the house and, but I can't make it a three-story building. I just couldn't vote for that. So I have no questions. No offense. Sorry about that.
If they used only like a half dormer on the front for the stairs on the left side and then still had a dormer on the right side for, for height clearance, would that be something?
But it's going full, full thing, so it's a third story.
Maybe shorten it up.
Two short ones, two short ones.
Two short ones, yeah.
Do something with two short ones, but not, not a full third floor. I mean, you wanna put a dormer in there, that'd be fine. I just, and I said no to other people. It's just, and I know, I know what you're trying to get and, and, I commend you for spending all this money. But in a Residence A neighborhood, it should stay in Residence A neighborhood. So you got something extra when you bought that house. You got a two-family in a Residence A neighborhood. So that was a win right there. But if you wanna do something different, I'd entertain something different, but not a third story. Just my comments.
So if we did, like, even like a shed dormer or like nantucket on the right side or something like to like, give the height clearance for a bedroom up there or anything like that?
What they could do with the bedrooms, they could put two dorms so the bedrooms have clearance. You know, and do something else with the configuration of the building. And do some work. You just might have to do a little more work, but...
That's what I'm just trying to figure out.
It's not a full...
No, I get it, I get it.
It's, it's just, it's not right for other people to try to do that. And they just go, you know, you're... And some of them may, so far hidden away that you don't even, no one ever see it. But it's not fair to the next guy, and the next guy comes up and the next guy, why'd you say yeah to my neighbor and not me? I wanna do the same thing. Or you got a single-family house, you can have two, two and a half stories. I'll work with that and I think, Rob, you could work with them, the couple dorms on there. You know, a couple. How, how long's that house? How long's the house?
How long the house? It's about 43 sheets.
All right, so you, two, seven-foot dorms or something?
Technically, right, couldn't, I mean, just thinking outside the box, right? Is there something, if they went over that existing, what probably was a garage at some point, like, couldn't you do that by right at this point? Could you build over that?
Yeah.
If you wanted to right now?
Yep. Connect it to the house.
Yeah, connect, I mean, so then you even have a...
There's a lot of options they could do there.
Structured may not be able to handle it.
Well, then you just beef it up. You beef up the foundation or whatever they gotta do for, for, for a garage.
Just trying to find the space that, you know, two fam, it's, it's...
Yeah, you're going up and you only get, you'd have two stories over there or two and a half stories on the shed and bring it over. I mean, I could live with that even, but...
Safe for both?
Full dorm, windows and all that, it's just...
Do you understand what we're saying? So, so we've been pretty consistent as a board about,
Res A?
Res A and two and a half story height limits. So trying to find, you know, trying to find the height that you'd need for the third story without making it appear as a third story.
Okay.
I think it's a challenge.
I understand. So if we do add a second story above the, the walkway and the, the family room, the issue is that that side, it's very close to the property line. It's less than three feet away.
Yeah, so you're...
Your building on top of it, it's kind of extending non-conformity, but are we allowed to do that? Probably no opening there, but...
Yeah, it's another van. It's close, yeah.
You need a van.
Yeah, extending though, like, vertical extension, still would require that? It's already existing.
I'll show you the floor, I'll show you the sidecar. Just like that.
Make a family room above that or whatever.
So you can see we're very close to the property line.
Yeah, I think a vertical extension though would require it. That's what we were trying to figure out.
Even if it does, I, I mean, I would have...
You'd like that more than...
Yeah, I mean, dorms, I mean, I wouldn't even need them because then they're gonna have their, their big giant family room over there. Split the house upright.
Is the other seventh street, Res B? What is that?
No.
The whole street is Res A?
It's all Res A, yeah.
Yep.
My understanding is the whole street is Res A.
I'm looking at it right now.
We're across the street from two six family houses that have giant full-length dormers on them already.
I know. They were done before the rules changed and all that. And I know we get...
I guess I, just to clarify, one thing is that there are already bedrooms and a bathroom on the third floor.
It has nothing, but it's still, it's still, it, it looks like two and a half stories building. That's what it looks like. And I wanna keep it looking like that, just for the neighborhood, just for the, for the other people that they don't come up here and they wanna do it. And you have six houses on the street. And then you got the neighbors two streets over wanna do it. And I just say no and it's the exact house. That's all I'm saying.
So what's the...
I said no to people already and I feel bad. Yeah.
Res A?
Yeah, the whole thing.
Yeah, the, I mean, the whole, I, I thought it was like, I thought, for some reason, I thought it was...
Well, there's probably a couple, couple two families and four families.
No, I mean, it's all multi, it's over there.
It's almost all multifamily. There's like four, you have four single-family houses.
That's right. I was surprised, I was surprised that it was...
There's a couple two families.
Res A?
They've done a Red, Emerald Street too, a small place. They were done years and years and years ago.
Yeah, like the...
You know, they started off, they, people put a garage in and they took the garage and made this on the home down there. Now there's, there's people's houses. They got a house behind their house. There's two, two houses on one lot. And there's a lot around Dowell Street. There's like six. There's, down Bird Street, there's a couple of them. You know? Can't do that no more, thank God.
Well, there's a 10-foot driveway to the second house and, and they took, they took the, they took the 10 feet off the house that was built.
They self-defiended it.
Yeah.
Well, they got the boss, they got the boss and they had a self-defi...
They absolutely did. They go to the back half of the lot. I know. Did you look, did you explore any kind of options with like a, like a, any type of like shed dormers or nantucket dormers or something that just didn't look like a full dormer, which, I mean, like, I know it's kind of slanted on the other side, so it doesn't look as, as bad as two full. I'm just trying to find something.
Yeah, we were just trying to add headroom in the existing rooms on that level. And add additional windows on that, in those rooms.
Well, if you wanna put a couple dorms on that side, you just make them look like dorms, not, and, and do whatever you gotta do in the other room.
What's the opinion of the dining?
What's your highest point right now?
I'm sorry?
What's your highest point right now?
Oh, my highest point?
So you got three feet, could you have a...
They could figure out what they need, right? They're gonna have to sit through, they got a lot of options they can host. I mean, it's up to them.
Yeah.
I have to...
That's what I mean, yeah.
They'd have to open it.
Yeah, that, you could do that with three feet, go to, I mean, you could...
Thirty-two feet? Okay.
You'd have to, to...
If you wanna work with Rob and try to figure out something like that, to keep that looking like a two-family, I mean, I mean, a single-family house.
Nantucket dormer would do, would do all right.
I would, I would be fine with that. Guys, let them figure it out because there's 100 different options they could do. But I'm, I wanna look at a two and a half story house. It's got two dorms, small dorms, that's fine. And Rob can work with them to see what they can do to come up with something that, he knows, he knows how I, how, how I like things. You guys like things, so...
There's some people here, I don't know if we wanna take...
We're gonna let him speak anyway. Yeah. You can have a seat. Yeah. I think I got one. I think I grabbed one.
Should I take it out?
Yeah, you can have a seat. Yeah, you just leave that on. Is there anyone wanna speak in favor? First call?
My name is Patrick Conroy, 272 Billings Street. I've been there since 1957, which I believe is before there was any Residence A. I do know the history is that, as a matter of policy, with the exception of where the Peckham's house was, it's now a nice little five-unit townhouse at the corner of Bayfield. The exception of that corner, it was just decided that from Ocean Street all the way up to Faxon, the beach side would just be Residence A. Didn't matter what was there. If you drive down Appleton Street, unlike Billings Street where you see a mix of two families and singles, Appleton Street was fully built out as multifamily up until probably the 50s. And then there were five ranch houses, so, two of which at least have been...
They're getting all the ranch down there then, right.
So, I'm here to speak in favor. My understanding is the issue in front of you is allowing, it's definitional. The rooms are up there, the height is up there in the middle. But by putting up dormers, it needs the definition of three stories instead of two.
Correct.
And I'm here to speak in favor of that. It's a nice project, putting two separate dormers for the two bedrooms. And there's skylight in the middle living area room would still require to come back. That would still meet the definition.
Appreciate it.
So, I would wanna point out is that these folks, I've known them since they were four days old, two out of the three of them.
See, this is real, I, I wanna speak in now because it has nothing to do with them at all.
Has nothing to do with them.
Two years from now, that house is sold. And it can happen. Don't, I've seen it happen. Two years later, the house sold and other people live in it. Completely different with six cars and bigger, bigger, bigger bedrooms and everything. That's why I vote the way I vote. It has nothing to do with the people that are moving in today. That house will be there for a thousand years or 200 years anyway. Maybe not, maybe 50 years and rip it down and build apartment buildings.
I think I understood your point is the relief that was granted to bigger houses on equal or smaller lots, that was in the past. And that as of the date's certain, even though it's a two-family, it's not gonna look like a one-family. It's on the largest lot on that side of the street. I think it's a good project and I think it would have no impact on any of the neighbors.
Thank you. Anyone else speak in favor? Second call? Third call, call apart, hearing close. I have a letter here from a DPD, we review the above referenced middle and have no comments. Anyone opposed on this side? First call, second call, third, third call closed. I mean, it's just the way I, I said no to people and I just can't change it now to put up a dirt, dirt story. It's just, it's gonna be all windows. It's gonna look, it's just, no. I just, I just have to say no with that. So I think they can come back, let's get a date and come back and work out something further. Do you need much?
12th or 26th?
12th, March 12th or... Is that good?
ZB A 2392, Nutback, Mattingle, for a variance in finding to construct a full-length dormer on the east side and a master suite, renovate the interior and exterior of the home on the premise number 58 Appleton Street, Quincy, and make a motion to move that to March 12th. Second.
Can I just clarify?
On the mo, wait a minute, on the motion? CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Yes?
So if we come back with like two dormers, it's still gonna be probably more square foot, right? Becomes kind of a third floor.
It, it's kind of, but it's not. It's a couple dorms on a two and a half story house.
Okay.
I think we're, talk to Mr. Conlon, he'll help you kind of navigate through it.
He'll navigate through. He knows, he knows what, you know, it's other people that came in front of us and they said no to the same house. And, and I feel bad. I just feel bad. Motion adjourned?
No.
But, oh yeah. Please have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to waive the reading of the previous minutes for the regularly scheduled meeting on January 23rd, 2024.
Second.
All right. All right, opposed.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.